The Leominster City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarulous Insurance Agency at www.decarulousinsuranceagency.com.
Up the public forum now. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council in the public forum? In a second time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council in the public forum? In a third and final time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council in the public forum? Seeing none, I'll declare the public forum closed. It's 6:30, so if you please rise and join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll take the roll call of the councils in attendance, starting with Councilor Angelini.
Present.
Councilor Ardinger.
Present.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Councilor David Cormier.
Present.
I shall be recorded as present. We have five councils present, which gives us a legal quorum. First item on our agenda this evening is C-24. Madam Clerk, do you want to read that into the record?
C-24 Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests that $27 million is appropriated in addition to the $3 million previously appropriated by vote of the council on August 15, 2019, and the $2 million previously appropriated by vote of the council on August 10, 2020, for the purpose of constructing and equipping a police station, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto. That to keep this appropriation, the treasurer will then approve, with approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow such amount and issue bonds or notes thereof, under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, or any other enabling legislation, and that the mayor and/or the treasurer are each authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project in this vote. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before I refer this to the Chairman of Finance, will you please amend the attendance records to reflect that Council Dombrowski is in fact present?
Yes, thank you.
I will refer C-24 to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. C-24 is first time on the calendar, regular course.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know there are a number of people present in connection with this project, including the mayor.
I'd like to ask for a recess.
Very well.
So we can have a presentation.
David motions, Pauline seconded. All in favor of recess, please indicate in the usual manner. We are in recess, and if you'd like to, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to come in with your group, and you may address us.
Come on in, everybody. We got seats. Come on in.
All right. We have the brief version for you this evening.
Very well.
If you are in opposition to that at all, let us know. We've been working on this for months. But anyway, thank you to our entire team. Not everyone could make it, but it consists of myself, Wendy Weeks, Greg Chapdellane, Councilor Claire Frieder, Chief Aaron Kennedy, Mark Amico, Dan Proetti, James Maroys, Brett Thompson, Carlos Centron, Kelly Valley that's here this evening, along with Dan Proetti and the chief, Kelly Gamel, Michelle Richards, Patrick McCarty, Jim Whitney, and Henry Frye. So I want to thank, Jen is with us, our comptroller, and Greg Chapdellane, they're going to speak a little bit to this breakout that we have here on the finance. I know there were some questions about, so how are we going to pay for this? So that'll be included in the presentation. Right now, presenting is Project Manager Todd Costa and Kevin Woodso, and they're from Castle Booze Associates, and they're going to take you through the project. As I said, we have a shrunk-down version, and then if there are questions, then put them together for us, and we'll have the answers for you at the next regular meeting when we anticipate a vote. Gentlemen?
Hi, my name is Kevin Woodso. I'm the project manager with Castle Booze Associates, with the architects for the project. Just want to give you a quick heads-up on where we've been through the project. We started back about almost 18, 19 months ago with a programming effort to go through with the department on how, create a space needs assessment for them, and it resulted in a program for the project of a building of about 34,000 square feet. So actually, I should start over. The location of the building is on Central Street in...
The former Miles Keatex Building, and then we, remember, we purchased a building next to it, Witten Real Estate Insurance Company, and then there was another three-family that was next to that as we're heading north into town, so we purchased all of those. And then later on, as you remember, there was another building on Lancaster Street, and we were working with the property owner. We came to a reasonable settlement on that, ended up purchasing that as an emergency exit to Lancaster Street. And so that takes pretty much the scope and the description of the property.
So what we did was, we found out rapidly that the site was in a floodplain, which meant that we really couldn't put anything in the lowest level of the building. So as you'll see on the site plan, we've got underneath of the building is covered parking for the staff, and whether it be their personal vehicles or the fleet of vehicles, probably going to be the fleet of vehicles so that cruisers can be protected from the elements during the winter months, summer months. Cars don't get too hot, they don't have to worry about being cleaned off in the winter. Laws offices much freer in and out of the building. So on the lower level, I don't know if this has got a, I don't have a pointer, you can see there's two stars. On the lower right-hand side is the public entrance, where the public parking will come in. There's handicap spaces there and a few non-handicap parking spaces. You notice along on the, around the corner on, I forget what street that is.
Cross Street?
On Cross Street, we've got some overflow parking for the public to come in and park on. It's connected with a series of stairs that bring you up the building, up the site, and into the front entrance of the building. You'll notice the second stair on Central Street on the left-hand side is the primary enter and exit for the staff. Cruisers will come in there, go around to the back of the building, drop off your personal vehicle, get into the building, report for roll call, back down into your cruiser, and then off, out the same way that you came in. The stair on the back of the site onto Lancaster Street is actually an emergency egress for the department. It will only be used if there's an issue on the front of the building. Good station design is to have two ways in and out of the station in case there's something going on on Central Street the department can still respond to, back to the station, or respond from the station. That was a big consideration that we had to make sure that we had, that it was, it's really designated as an emergency use only, to be friendly to the neighbors. On that same side, as you come in, if you're not going, if the cruiser comes in and has a detainee, they come up and around the ramp and into the far left-hand side of the Sallyport. It's a two-bay state, it's a two-bay Sallyport, so two cruisers can come in at the same time and take care of any activities that they need to in a secure environment. So on the main level, where the public would come in on the right, the arrow on the right-hand side, come into a public lobby. First floor is primarily dedicated to the detention area, which is on the far right-hand, left-hand side, and the patrol activities, where the dark blue is the patrols locker rooms. We have a roll call towards the front of the building, and some of the shift commanders are also in the front of the building as well, in the lighter blue. In the front, there's some of the community outreach-type offices for the department, so if somebody has some business with the department, they can come in and be brought into one of those stations, one of those rooms. One of them is a firearms identification room, permitting room, records, and those types of functions on the first floor. So there's a stair that goes upstairs with an elevator that will all be controlled by access control to the second floor. Second floor, we have on the front of the building, which is oriented the same as it was on the floor plan, on the right-hand side, is a meeting room or a training room for the department to conduct in-house training and to be a host community for, a host station for other professional development programs. Behind that is the, the dark red, the dark blue on the top is the evidence storage, which is secure, that only a certain number of people are allowed into. Then continuing counterclockwise around the back of the building, the big blue in the back corner is future expansion space. We realized that this building is a 50-year building. We know that we have some existing, some other spaces that need to be, in the future that may need to be expanded on, so we put in the, enclosed that back corner of the building, not only to make the building look complete, but to give the department some built-in future expansion. On the, across the whole front of the building is primarily the investigative units, whether it be drugs, domestic, those types of activities, is the entire front side of the building. Then when you go up to the third floor, that's the administrative suite with the chief's office and his command staff. There's a conference room up there for him, a separate waiting area, which would be all access-controlled, two ways off, stairs, two stairs up and down, little kitchenette area in the light blue area that you see on the top right-hand side is actually the second floor of the training room, which I'll show in interior elevation of in a couple So what we did was, we created a three-story building with a very good street presence. We were looking to do, when we first interviewed for the project 18 years, 18 months ago, was talk about trying to create a gateway to the downtown district. So we were looking for some municipal architecture that would really make a statement that here is downtown, this is a municipal building, it's got some permanence, it's got some strength of a good municipal building. We've got, the gray elements are a cementitious panel, we've got storefront frames, we've got regular brick, and we've got some darker brick for a band to create around the base of the building. The site is set up so that it's actually raised from street level by about five and a half feet. That was intentional. It gives us some forced entry protection for many vehicles on Central Street that may or may not intentionally lose control and want to try and do some damage to the building. There's a good earth and berm and some other measures out there that will protect the building from vehicle entrance. Again, on the, like I said, on the, this is looking at the southeast, from the southeast looking to the northwest, so there's your visitor parking at the top of the building. Couple of quick interior renderings of, the top left is the interior lobby. As you walk into the front of the building, you'll see that there's a, there's a, on the left-hand side, there's a welcoming window for a greeter from the department, and then on the left-hand side, or the right-hand side is where the records window would be. The top right-hand picture is a picture of the main training room with a large teaching monitors set up on the teaching, on the teaching wall, almost a two-story space, very good learning environment in there. On the lower right-hand side is the administrative areas, third-floor waiting room, a waiting area, and admin assistance person. And then on the bottom left-hand side is the administrative areas, main conference room for major staff meetings and that sort of, command staff meetings and other appointments that the chief may need to have. I was told to make it quick, so that's kind of a...
Is the budget timeline in the, on the slide?
Yes.
Go ahead, you can go forward, then we'll do questions. So I know this was a, you know, this, everything centers around, so how do you pay for it? And what is the budget? So we started off in July 23, 2020, with a proposed $37 million project. As you can see, all the timelines, as we got closer, you know, back in May when we did the final estimate, we were a little bit concerned about what increased cost. Everyone knows there's a supply issue with certain products, there's been increases in certain products, but when you put it out and people looking down the road, you know, in the future to provide materials, we ended up doing very well. We ended up doing better than anticipated, so there's our final, there's our final number, and we did quite well. And I think the second question that we were asked is, how do we pay for this? And again, we won't raise taxes or do a debt exclusion or an override. We have other debt that's expiring, the high school bonders. Remember, we did all our projects in 10 years instead of 20. I know it's scary when we're doing them, and we're only doing it for 10, but 10 years goes by 15 times faster than 20 years. So those final payments will be coming up, and that's how we intend to fund the police station. But we did, I think you remember from the very beginning, we really spent a lot of time focusing on trying to stay as close to the downtown as we could. If you watch the front lobby room to the police department, sometimes they'll never understand it, but it gets a lot of walk-in traffic. Not all to bail people out or for, you know, criminal investigations, simply people coming in, asking for information, forms, directions sometimes, you'd be surprised what a busy place it is. We didn't want to provide that disconnect or a number of police stations that I personally looked at and others, where they built the police station in the best piece of land they could find, which is sometimes on the outskirts of the city. And we wanted our police department to continue to be a police department where people engaged, felt comfortable coming, and that's pretty much how the design was done. We had an outstanding team. Each of the members of the committee brought with them different talents and expertise and a different view and version of what they thought the police station would look like, and what you see here is just a combined effort by everyone. We were lucky to have a lot of local contractors who worked on this with us, but coming down to picking out colors and designs, I think, helped a lot in terms of helping Castle Booze with, you know, with the final version of what our police station looks like. Greg Chapdellane has been involved from the very beginning, Jen jumped on board immediately, so it's really been a team effort, and we're happy tonight that we're coming in with this budgeted amount for this project. And so what happens after this is, after you approve it, the final vote, then we obviously give our notice of intent to proceed to the contractor, and work begins.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mayor?
No, that's, unless you have questions.
I'll remind the council that this is going to be, we're going to shortly schedule a public hearing on this for our next regular meeting, which occurs on Tuesday, the 12th, as a result of the holiday. And because there will be a public hearing associated with this as required by law, I don't want to go too far afield this evening with questions or comments. I think we should probably keep ourselves fairly constrained, and, but if there's something, some burning need to ask a question that might depend on questions you'll develop for the public hearing, I suppose we could, we could allow a bit of latitude, but with that being said, I'll just ask if there's any member of the council that has anything that they would like to ask this evening. Okay. I want to thank you, Mayor, and your team, for all your hard work and for coming in with this long-awaited milestone and project for the city of Leominster. We are sure, as a council, I'll look forward to a more thorough examination on the 12th and our public hearing. So if there's, if there's nothing else that you need to provide us at this juncture, and I will encourage any counselors that have questions that develop between now and the 12th to let the clerk know them in advance so we can forward them to you, to your office.
Yes, please.
Mr. Mayor. We will go back into, we'll come out of recess and go back into session and take the appropriate steps to establish ourselves for the 12th.
Anything, Greg or Jen, anything? No, I think we've covered it all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So we are back in session, and I will go back to the Chairman of Finance to establish the appropriate public hearing date.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did pick up on that, that I did not establish a public hearing when I gave this regular course, so it is getting regular course, and I'd like to establish a public hearing on October 12, 2021, at 5:54 PM.
Okay, and I'll check with the other members of finance. I assume both Councilor Cormier and Councilor Angelini are okay with that?
Yes.
So the unanimous recommendation of the finance is to give C-24 regular course and establish a public hearing date on October 12, 2021, at 5:54 PM. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of establishing the public hearing as suggested, please recognize the usual manner. If you want to oppose, by a vote of six to nothing, we have established the public hearing on October 12 at 5:54 PM. All right, moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda, starting with 11-22.
11-22, request that the city council vote to accept the 2020 re-presinting plan for the city of Leominster.
11-22 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course.
You've heard the 11-22 has been given regular course.
If I may, Mr. President?
Yes.
I just, I wanted to point out that I talked to the city clerk today, and there's actually an ordinance that needs to be, will need to be updated regarding this. It's Chapter 1, Section 1-11. So she did look it up, and she indicated to me that it has to be approved first by, she can probably explain better by whom, and once it, once it's all approved, we are going to have to do an ordinance change so that the ordinance can reflect the boundaries.
Oh, okay.
So, the first step is, we look at the map that we have, and we'll accept it, and then by October 30, I have to send it into the LERDC, which is a committee that includes the Secretary of State and the governor's appointments to review all of the maps for re-presinting in all of Massachusetts. And they'll take the map that we proposed to them, they'll make sure it complies with the laws. In this case, it definitely will because the state created it themselves to help us out. And then once we get the yes vote from them, we can then move on to adopt it within our ordinances, because if they were to reject it, we'd have to go back to the drawing board and start over. So we can't amend our ordinance until we get the okay from LERDC.
Okay, just for the public, this is a 10-year process. Every 10 years, we're required to change our maps to reflect inequality of population amongst the various, 15 precincts, I guess we have, right? Five wards, three precincts per ward, they're supposed to be equivalent to each other in size, and sometimes we have to shift as the population grows and moves and different areas of the city become more densely populated or less densely populated, we have to make a couple of boundary line adjustments. I don't think we have anything earth-shattering here, and as the clerk said, the state's already well-involved in this process, so we're going to give this regular course. I don't think we need any referrals, Mr. Chairman.
No, I don't think so.
And 11-22 will take, will take up on the 12th. All right, any new business or old business? Seeing none, anybody have anything for the community calendar? Seeing none there, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, good, good idea. Excellent. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I would be remiss, before we adjourn, we all are saddened, of course, by the loss of Jimmy LeBlanc, our Emergency Management Director, who has provided 50 years of service to this community, and chiefly, I think, with the Emergency Management Division, and then before that, Civil Defense. Tragically passed away recently, and we are all saddened and shocked by his loss, and it is certainly to the detriment of this community because he gave so much. So at this time, I would just propose a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you very much.
If I may, Mr. President?
Sure.
I would just ask that you, for our next agenda, that you put something on there so we can have another moment of silence and a few words.
Okay.
At the next meeting.
I'll ask the clerk to do that. Thank you for that. Thank you for that. All right, unless there's something else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Councilor Pauline Cormier, do I have a second? Councilor David Cormier, all in favor? Recognize usual manner. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
The Leominster City Council Meeting is funded in part by DeCarulous Insurance Agency at www.decarulousinsuranceagency.com.